Good afternoon and welcome to the Senate Government Operations Committee. Today is Thursday, February 3rd at 3 o'clock PM. We are doing this remotely today for the first time, so I hope we get through this as well as Chair Chang has done earlier in housing. Joining me today is Senator Chang, Senator Favella, Vice Chair Dela Cruz should be coming on. I don't see anyone else. Before proceeding, I'd like to make a few housekeeping announcements. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. You can find links to viewing options for the Senate meetings on live and on-demand video page of the legislature's website. In the unlikely event that we encounter major technical difficulties during the hearing and must abruptly end it, the committee will reconvene on Tuesday, February 8th by a video conference in Room 16. Because of our recording, the hearing will be 90 minutes long, and to accommodate everyone who registered to testify remotely today, we will be limiting testimony to two minutes each, and the testimonies will be posted on the legislature's website. So let us proceed with Senate Bill 3002 relating to procurement, providing guidance and updates to the reporting obligations for procurement of locally sourced products pursuant to Acts 175 and 176 passed last year. Testifying on Zoom, first up is Assistant Superintendent Ranald Tanaka. Aloha.
Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, thank you very much for your time. We stand by our testimony. We certainly appreciate any form of efficiencies within government, and thank you for the streamlining efforts towards this. We stand by for any questions that you may have. Aloha.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tanaka. Next is Ulupono Initiative, Mica Munekata. Aloha, Mica.
Good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, members of the committee. Mica Munekata here on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative. We'll send on our testimony supporting the intent of this measure. Just with a few additional comments, just wanted to mention that we are supportive of capturing the metric around total food. I think both the DOE and the departments across the administration look to capture that, but just to clarify that in language that makes sense from our perspective. We do want to mention that we do think that the current statute around Act 175 passed last year provides some key metrics that are important to capture when trying to move forward with rolling out the farm-to-school efforts of the DOE and really increasing local procurement in that sense. I think that those metrics are going to be key in the state really taking a look at how we can improve our purchasing. So we do recommend that the Act 175 language remain. So thank you very much, Chair, for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And next up is Hunter Heaven from Superstitions. Is that correct, Superstitions?
That's correct. Hi, Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, members of the committee. Testifying to Senate support my written testimony and following on from comments of Mica and Ulupono would also support the retaining of some of the other critical aspects of Act 175, but would hope to see further delineation along the lines of volumes of particular goods that are purchased. And also happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Hunter. Anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Okay, we have written testimony in support from Hawaii Cattlemen's Council and the Hawaii Oud Producers Cooperative. Members, any questions of our testifiers? Okay, thank you. We will move on to Senate Bill 3015 relating to procurement. This is amended the cash or protest bond amount. Testifying first is SPO Interim Director Bonnie Kahakuwi. Bonnie, aloha.
Aloha and good afternoon, Senator Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz, members of the committee. Bonnie Kahakuwi for the State Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony with comments.
Thank you. Associated Builders and Contractors, why? Do we have Malcolm Barcarsee?
Not present.
Okay, in support, General Contractors Association, Ryan Sapuda.
Good afternoon, Chair Moriwaki, Vice Chair Dela Cruz and members of the committee. GCA is in support of this measure. The purpose of the bill is to reinstate the safeguard that was in place so that legitimate protests on large projects are not deterred. GCA understands the need to put skin in the game in order to deter frivolous protests, but the removal of the bond cap puts the cost of appeal on large projects so high that my members are saying that it's too much of a risk and only affordable to the biggest contractors. We are not in favor of removing the bond. I just want to say that we're in favor of a balanced approach where we can deter frivolous protests on large projects without deterring the legitimate ones, specifically the appeals, right? If the committee does not want to restore the bond cap, I urge the committee to amend the bill by following what the other states who require a bond do in order to prevent the chilling effect of deterring legitimate appeals. Those states allow the bond to be returned minus the administrative costs, even if they lose the appeal. The bond is only forfeited upon a determination that the appeal was frivolous or in bad faith. I see that there's been testimony that points to the number of appeals were not reduced after the removal of the cap, but we are curious to find out if any of those appeals were on large projects, specifically projects over $15 million, as that is where my members feel that we will see the effects of the cap removal. Some form of the safeguard needs to be in place to promote fair and ethical procurement regarding appeals of agency decisions on bid protests. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is the Airlines Committee in Hawaii. Do we have someone from the Airlines Committee? Young Oh?
Hello, Chair Moriwaki. Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Vice Chair Dela Cruz, Young Oh with Watanabe testifying on behalf of the Airlines Committee of Hawaiian Opposition. I apologize for the late testimony and also wanted to clarify a reference in our testimony referencing to be clarified to Act 224 of last year, as the previous testifier may have mentioned. This measure reverses and reinstates many of the bond amounts which the legislature already passed last year. While the ability to challenge awards is important, I think the concern is excessive delays to critical projects or without vesting. We simply ask the legislature to let the act play out. I think it's been since July when the act did go into effect. For these reasons, we respectfully ask that the committee hold this measure. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. And last, Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Department of Transportation will stand on our testimony in opposition to the measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Members, any questions? I do ask, Bonnie, are you there?
I'm here.
You heard the testimony from the General Contractors Association on the concerns of the large contractors being chilled because of this not having a cap and whether the protests that you have in your testimony are with the large contracts, $15 million and over. Do you have information of that?
I don't have the information at my fingertips, but I can get that for you.
Thank you. And so you're saying that your testimony is in opposition to the lifting of or the placing of caps on it? And what the GCA is saying is that there are other jurisdictions that don't have, that they do place caps or don't, I guess, have this kind of high ceiling of the 1% bond?
Yes, our testimony would be to leave the bill at the law as is, the 1% without cap.
Okay, thank you. Members, anyone else with questions? Moving on then to Senate Bill 3034 relating to joint contractor subcontractor listings, clarifying that the joint contractors subcontractors are required to be listed in the construction bids. Which contractors are to be listed in the construction bids? First up is Department of Accounting and General Services. Who is representing the DAGs? Anyone? Testimony, oh, Audrey. Audrey, Deputy Director Hidano?
Yes.
Aloha. Your testimony on 3034.
We did not. Oh, 303, yes, we sent.
Yeah, 303, yeah.
Okay, Audrey Hidano, Deputy for DAGs. I will stand on our written testimony, Senator.
And that's in support?
Yes, and we have, yes, mainly in support.
And next, State Procurement Office, Bonnie Kahakuwi.
Good afternoon again. The State Procurement Office stands on its written testimony with the minor clarification and comments.
Okay, the City and County of Honolulu, do we have anyone here from the county in support? Oh, I see Andy Kowano. Are you here? In support?
I was on the call to testify on SB 3371. I'm just on hold right now.
Okay, we have, okay. Oh, thank you. General Contractors Association, Ryan, in support. You want to testify?
Yeah, we'd just like to stand on our written testimony in support and just say this is going to clarify a Monica Point case that happened and just specify that the subcontractor listing should be limited to those licensed under Chapter 444, which is the intent and the historical practice of all general contractors. Thanks.
Thank you. And one individual in opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Members, any questions? I do, Bonnie, in your testimony, you mentioned that the rules use joint venture, but the law states that they're joint contractors. So is there a problem with us continuing to use the term joint contractors?
Well, the term joint contractor is not in Chapter 444, so we probably will need to make some clarifying language if the bill is to go forward.
Okay, so you suggest that, shall we address in committee report that joint contractors also include joint ventures? Because the law right now, 103D, does not include joint venture.
Well, the definition includes, bidder includes individuals, partnership firms, joint ventures, joint ventures or other legal entities. So our concern is that joint subcontractors is not defined under Chapter 444.
But this is 103D?
Yeah, so, right, but if we're going to put that in, we want to make sure that there is no conflict between, you know, the two standards.
So.
So if we just remove perhaps joint and just, I'm not sure what the legal ramifications.
License under Chapter 444. So if, just to clarify, because I don't want us to have to redo this, name of the joint contractor or subcontractor who's not required to be licensed under Chapter 444?
You want them to be, right.
Because we could still use joint contractor, but you're saying that it's not, it's not a term that's in.
It's not, it's not, it's not a term. So would we, we would have to get legal opinion if we use the term joint subcontractors and it's not a term in the procurement statute, would there be a conflict and could there be?
Could we say joint contractor? And then the subcontractor is under Chapter 444?
I would need to check with people who do Chapter 444 DCCA if that would be unacceptable.
Yeah, I have, I have problems with it because the title is very limiting. It's relating to joint contractor or subcontractor.
That would be something that the licensing board would have to make that determination because that's where their license is under them. It's not under an SPO.
So.
We can.
Yeah, can we? Yeah, attorney, yeah.
Okay.
So that we can get this correct, but the idea here is that the listing would be those that are in Chapter 444.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to SB 3270 relating to public procurement prohibiting the determination of non-responsibility based solely on the failure to possess a prior experience. And the only testifier I have here is Bonnie, SPO.
Good afternoon. The State Procurement Office stands on its written testimony in support of this bill.
Anyone else wishing to testify in this bill? Okay. Members, any questions of Bonnie? Moving on to SB 3350 relating to procurement requiring a new procurement for a change order that's over 50% of the initial contract cost or substantially increases the scope of work. I have the Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me the opportunity. The Department of Transportation stands on our testimony in opposition to the measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Okay, so I have the Department of Transportation back on.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you're saying that it is difficult. Do you have examples of the difficulty that is over 50% for a change order? And I think what this is trying to determine is, what is the standard? What is the threshold so that we just don't keep on renewing contracts?
I believe we'll have to get that information to you, ma'am. I don't have it at the top of my head. But we might have somebody else. Tammy Lee might be able to bail me out here.
Is anyone, Tammy, Tammy, aloha. Can you provide an example or a concern of having a standard that's a hard standard of 50% in change of scope? That would be difficult for the department.
Okay, sure. Can you hear me okay?
A little louder.
Thanks, Chair. So for the Highways Division, we did a quick query to see which, whether we had any projects that were over the 50%. And we did identify that we had one, and the issues in that drove, you know, the price 50% higher than the original contracted price was because of utilities. And I guess what happened was there wasn't the utilities identified on the asphalt drawings. And so then when, you know, the utility was found, I think that's when, you know, we have to stop work and do whatever engineering that the contractor has to do, and that drove the contract price higher than 50%. But it's those types of, you know, unknown things that occurred during construction, which would be within the original scope of the contract. It's not anything that would be outside of the original scope.
So could I have, I see Audrey Hidano from DAGs still on. Can you address this concern as well from DAGs? You folks have a lot of construction projects. Is 50% standard reasonable? Or will there be, as in DOT's case, situations in which it go above 50% and he would need some flexibility?
It's kind of hard to say, Senator, in a sense that of what I know. Sometimes if the change orders are a lot, I'm not saying 50% or whatever. Sometimes it's because of the owner or the tenant's request, meaning they want something done because either they have money or something. So it then becomes a change order to the existing contract. So how do we measure the 50%? Is it because of consultant error? Is it because of contractor error? Is it because user request? All of these make up the differences of why a project might have a change order.
But is, but the question is, if it's 50%, is it above the price, above the cost that would be difficult for a project if it did find utilities, as in DOT's case, that may drive the cost up for the project? And would there, would 50%? It could go above 50%?
There are times talk about DOT. We had one for Department of Health where Hawaiian Electric made us do a whole bunch of stuff that drove the change order up. I don't know if it was, I don't think it was over 50%, but there could be various reasons why. I mean, it's a lot, 50% for change orders, but there could be a whole bunch of reasons. So how do you cherry pick, you know, the ones that would be applicable to 50%?
Okay, Bonnie, I see you're still there. What would you suggest in terms of this being a standard? It seems like it's high. But what can we do to address that? But there may be situations in which we do need to have the work done in the best interest of the state. Can we put language in like that?
Well, in previous times, we did allow for exemptions to construction, but that has since been reversed. And so there is a current bill that allows for exemption in small purchase only, so that would not necessarily answer that question. I do know that putting a cap for everything would result, you know, it's going to be challenging for us for some agencies, and it also could delay projects because then you'd have to stop, resolicit for anything over, you know, that 50% threshold and could actually be more costly. So we'd have to weigh the balance. Is it, at a certain point, where does that balance come in?
So.
I'm sorry. Perhaps it needs, you know, the HOPA oversight, that they need a second opinion if that 50% is justified? And not just from the project manager.
So what DOT is suggesting is that 50% be your threshold, but that if it's beyond that, either the head of the purchasing agency or the CPO, the central purchasing.
Chief Procurement Officer.
Yeah, Chief Procurement Officer. Be able to, to be able to have a written justification for the increase. Which would you suggest would at least provide for that a fair review of the need for the change order?
Well, the HOPA, the head of the purchasing agency, normally the directors that their respective department, would have more intimate knowledge than the CPO. And they have access to all the documents, et cetera, et cetera. If you do send it to the CPO, it's with the understanding that it's going to take longer because now we have to review all the solicitation, you know, the scope of work, all the costs involved. And again, whenever you delay a project, delayed projects cost money.
You should just come up with a way to be more efficient.
Do it faster.
That's not, that's not an acceptable response, Bonnie.
I'm not sure, we would still have to.
You gotta be timely.
Yes, I'm not saying we're not timely, but.
No, but you're giving us this whole list of reasons why it's going to delay. That's not acceptable. You redo your system, you figure it out, you ask for the IT you might need or the help you might need, but delaying things is not, is not a way to kill the measure. Shouldn't be a way to kill the measure.
Well, I'm just saying that if you add an extra step, any extra step, no matter what it is, will slow down whatever the process is.
So you're saying that if we have the head of the purchasing agency, which is the director of the department, having a way to have a written justification of why they have to go over the 50%, that should be sufficient. It's in the record, yeah, without having to a whole bunch of steps.
They're the head of purchasing agency. They should be held accountable for their, for their projects. Okay?
Okay, all right. Anything else? Any other comments, questions? Okay, so the head of a purchasing agency, written justification should be a good accountability measure. Okay, I'll move on then. Thank you. SB 3371 relating to procurement code requiring parties to procurement protest to use best efforts to resolve issues at the procurement officer level before submission of a protest. Bonnie, you're up again.
Bonnie, I got it.
Bonnie.
Yes, the State Procurement Office stands on its testimony.
3371. In support?
We support the intent.
Okay, DAGs, Audrey, Hidano. Audrey, you still there? You're on mute. Audrey.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Hi, Senator Audrey Hidano, Deputy DAGs. Wait, I'm sorry, you're coming in and out.
It's 3371.
So Audrey Hidano, Deputy, right. We support the intent, Senator.
Okay, this is, okay, the City and County of Honolulu, I see. I see the city. Andy Kowano, aloha.
Hello, aloha, Andy Kowano, Chair Moriwaki here to answer questions on SB number 3371. I submitted my written testimony a few days ago in opposition.
Thank you. Associated Builders and Contractors. Is Malcolm Barcarsee here?
Not present.
And we, okay, so that's it. We have no other testifiers. Anyone else here to testify on this measure? Okay, Andy, you're in opposition to this, and you've got really extensive testimony as to the problem with allowing this informal level of resolution. Can you go over your procedure and why this might be a problem?
I don't, you know, the way I see it is that the current laws work. You know, there's very specific guidance on how to handle protests. And the current statutes allow the city to have discussions, even after the briefing, with anyone considering a protest. And, you know, they can essentially turn in a written explanation if necessary, you know, within the five days. And then they have specifically five days to submit written protests, you know, after the fact. So I think, I think, I really don't believe this bill is needed because everything seems to actually work fine in that. because everything seems to actually work fine in that area for us.
So you're saying that the procedure right now allows for the informal resolution prior to the, the five day working, five working day deadline?
Let me clarify, the current laws do not say informal resolution. If, if I were to say one thing, I think, I think that wording maybe is, is too vague. I, I don't think you can be informal, actually. I, I think, you know, any resolution has to be done, you know, formally and deliberately, such that, you know, the, the person thinking about protesting understands why the decision was made.
So, so just to clarify, so the, the deadline is the five days, five working days after an award is made.
Yes.
During that period, you do have informal discussions or you have briefings on why I didn't get the award? How does that work? Because there's a hard deadline of the five working days. But prior to that, this is what apparently this bill is, is asking for, some kind of informal frank and open discussion of why I didn't get it? Is, is, is that? And then we're not talking about solicitation, we're talking about award.
Yeah, it's a order. So, so I, in my, in my written testimony, I reference HRS one oh three D dash seven oh one A. It says it requires a protest to be submitted within five working days after the aggrieved person knows or should have known of the facts giving rise thereto, provided that a protest of an award or proposed award shall be, in any event, submitted in writing within five days after the posting of the award of the contract, if no request for debriefing has been made as applicable. Under HRS one oh three D three oh three H, small h in parentheses, it says any protest by the non selector offer pursuant to section one oh three D dash seven oh one, following a debriefing, shall be filed in writing with the procurement officer within five days after, after the date upon which the debriefing is completed. We think, we really do believe what, what is in place works. I, I don't think, I don't think the informal frank discussion is really necessary because if it doesn't resolve, you know, the, the dispute that may cause the protest, it's just going to raise more questions, right? It's, it's just, to me, it's just better to be, you know, very direct upfront, you know, when we communicate the award. And then if, if the vendor that feels that, you know, their organization has to file protests, goes forward with the protests, they have specific reasons why, and, you know, we deal with it at that point. And I think, I think the way the laws are right now, it's, it's specific, you know, with timing and it, if we follow it right, we, we can do things in, you know, the most expeditious manner to get to resolution. I think, I think when you have these open frank discussions, you know, you could result, that could result in, you know, more misunderstandings and could result in other issues as well as, I think it, it opens up things for, you know, other concerns and matters to come up. So it's just, you know, I have, I have a preference with the current law right now.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie Kahakui, you're in support of this informal discussion, but having heard Mr. Kowano, what is your recommendation? It seems that the law allows for this and is pretty straightforward.
Yes, so in addition to that, our rules, HER three dash one twenty six three, already provides for informal conversation. It basically says, but this is a filing of a complaint and protest prior to the receipt of offers that we, again, this is for the solicitation portion, to seek informal resolution of, of the, of the protests and complaints. After the award, that that's what the debriefing is for, to explain to the vendors why they were not selected. And it's been in our experience, when we've had these debriefings, we've come to realize that maybe they really missed the mark on whatever criteria we set out. And then they understand. So that, you know, could, some of it could be resolved at the debriefing stage.
So, so are, so I, I'm hearing from Mr. Kowano that we really have it all in place in the law and that this bill is, is not necessary.
It's, I agree, it's not necessary. It just supports the, the rules that we already have in place.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, members? Okay, thank you, thank you very much. We're going to move on then to SB. Thank you. SB three, three, seven, two, relating to public procurement. When it's determined that a solicitation or award of a contract is in violation of law, this authorizes the contract to be rescinded and awarded to the person who would have been awarded absent the violation. First up is DAGs. Audrey Hidono, Deputy Director of Hidono, are you there? Okay, this is SB three, three, seven.
Sorry, Senators, Audrey Hidono, Deputy, we support the intent of this bill, SB three, three, seven, two. Thank you.
Thank you. SBO, Bonnie Kahakui.
Good afternoon. The State Procurement Office supports the intent of the bill and we provided some revised language.
Thank you. Associated Builders and Contractors.
Not present.
Okay, with comments and one individual in opposition. Anyone else to testify in this bill? Okay, well, we'll move along then to SB three, three, seven, three. And this is relating to public procurement, clarifying the deadline for submitting written protests based on the content of a solicitation. Department of Accounting and General Services, Audrey Hidono.
Thank you, Senator Audrey Hidono, Deputy for DAGs. We sent a testimony, we support this bill, thank you.
SBO, Bonnie Kahakui.
State Procurement Office supports the intent of the bill to clarify the language, thank you.
And we have Associated Builders and Contractors comments to clarify the deadline also of the five working days. I'm going to call Bonnie back. ABC Hawaii suggests that we clarify even further that five working days after the aggrieved person knows of the facts. So that's clear that pertains to contracts, award of contracts and not the solicitation. Is that, is that something that you can help us clear language?
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay.
That's acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Moving along then to SB thirty forty, which is relating to procurement, amending the nomination process and number of numbers for the Procurement Policy Board, authorizing the state procurement administrator to develop and administer the procurement optimization systems and create a special fund for that. And also, I think, make some non substantive amendments to the Development of Disabilities provision. First up, Bonnie, again, SBO.
Yes, the State Procurement Office strongly supports this bill, thank you.
And the State Council on Development of Disabilities, Dane Tree Bartolos. Hi, Dane Tree.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. I appreciate this opportunity to testify and strong support of the Senate Bill thirty forty. We'd like to highlight in our testimony, the last paragraph, where we support the changes on page nine, lines ten and twelve through sixteen. The employee racial language in procurement code one oh three D dash ten, ten needs to be removed to conform with the amendment made to section one oh three D dash one zero zero one by Act fifty five Session Laws of Hawaii twenty twenty one that has a correct racial. So thank you very much for this opportunity to testify in strong support of Senate Bill thirty forty.
Thank you. Members, we have one written testimony from the Hawaii Alliance of Nonprofit Organizations with comments on the transaction fees imposed on nonprofits. Anyone else to testify? So Bonnie, can you come back on? One question from Hano. They're concerned about the transaction fees on nonprofit health and community services. Is that part of what you're doing on your procurement system? I thought it was for goods and services, or services, I guess. Would you be assessing a fee?
Right now, it's assessed, our current process of during, on the eprocurement system, all vendors awarded a contract are assessed a fee. So on the new eprocurement system, since we don't have funding to have our own, to develop an eprocurement system, the only way to do that was, is to have a e-marketplace. And for those vendors that are providing goods and services that we can put on a marketplace, will be assessed a transaction fee.
Okay. One more question. We earlier passed a bill repealing the policy board, and it's in this bill. So you have no problems with deleting that as well in this bill?
That's correct.
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to take a recess to, to return later for decision making. Okay, aloha, we're reconvening the three o'clock hearing on the Government Operations Committee for Decision Making. Let me know that any bill passing out will include necessary technical non substantive amendments. So on SB three, zero, zero, two, relating to procurement with the Department reporting obligations regarding procurement of locally sourced products, the chair's recommendation is to pass with technical amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz, can you take the vote? Vice Chair Dela Cruz. So we're voting on SB.
Three, zero, zero, two is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Gabri?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Okay, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. SB thirty, thirty, fifty, relating to procurement, amending the cash or protest bond amount. We just passed the bill changing the amount for the bond protest. So protest bond. So the chair's recommendation is to defer this bill. Senate Bill thirty, thirty four, relating to joint contractor subcontractor listing. Chair's recommendation is to DM, defer decision making until we get a clarification from the AG on this joint contractor or joint venture terminology. Senate Bill thirty.
Is it a time certain or you're going to just repost?
Are we going to, oh. I think we could do it for next, next, the next meeting, which is February eighth. SB, okay, thank you. SB three, two, seven, zero, relating to public procurement, prohibiting determination of non responsibility based solely on failure to possess prior experience. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Okay, wait.
Bill three, two, seven.
SB, recommendation on SB thirty, two, seventy is to pass unamended with all members present. Any objections? Any reservations? Recommendation adopted.
Okay, SB three, three, five, zero, relating to procurement, requiring a new procurement for a change order over fifty percent of the initial contract cost. The substantially increasing scope of work. Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments to address situations where it's in the best interest of the state to complete the project, but require the head of the purchasing agency to approve the change order, including justification, and do it in writing. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Recommendation on SB thirty, three, fifty is to pass with amendments with all members present. Any objections? Any reservations? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. SB three, three, seven, one, relating to the procurement code requiring parties to the protest to use best, best efforts to resolve issues at procurement at the procurement officer level. We heard from, from the county of Honolulu as, as well as the state procurement officer on, on the current rules and law already allows this. The chair is recommending that we defer this bill. SB three, three, seven, two, relating to public procurement. When it's determined that a solicitation or award violates the law, authorizing rescinding the contract, awarding it to the person the contract would have been awarded to absent the violation. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, taking DAGs and the SBO recommendations, replacing lines to read. The contract may be rescinded and awarded to the next lowest responsible and responsive bidder to whom the contract would have been awarded were it not for the violation. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Senate Bill thirty, three, seventy, two, recommendation is to pass with amendments with all members present. Any objections, reservations? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. SB three, three, seven, three, relating to public procurement, clarifies the deadline for submitting written protests that are based on the content of a solicitation. The chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments to address ABC Hawaii's concern there'd be a bright line as to the deadline for filing a protest. So it's, so I recommend that we replace lines seven to ten on page one with clarifying language. The five day, working day deadline applies only to contract awards. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair Dela Cruz?
Senate Bill thirty, three, seventy, three, recommendation is to pass with amendments with all members present. Any objections? Reservations? Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Last bill, Senate Bill thirty, forty, relating to procurement, which amends the Procurement Policy Board nomination and membership and authorizes the state procurement administrator to develop and administer procurement automation system and also addresses the amendment from the disability council. The chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments to delete section four from the purpose section and pages one, and on pages one and two, which is the creation management of the state procurement policy board, which was already passed in Senate Bill two, three, eight, three. Chair votes aye.
Recommendation on Senate Bill thirty, forty is to pass with amendments by members present. Any objections, reservations? Recommendation adopted.
Oh. Oh. Okay, okay. So before I adjourn, SB three, zero, three, four, will be posted on a future agenda because I think our agenda is really full for next, the next Tuesday.
Wait, three, zero, three, four?
Three, zero, three, four. We will post at a different time.
Oh, the one that you deferred.
Yeah. Our agenda is very full next Tuesday.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll post in the future. Okay. Otherwise, this concludes the Government Operations Committee hearing. Thank you, everyone. Aloha, aloha.